2019 city council meeting. Lynda, would you please call the roll?
Deckent.
Here.
Dave Line.
Here.
Solner.
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Here.
Inzki.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. I invite you to pray with me. God of life's seasons, in the warmth and in the cold, you are always here. We praise you for every breath we take, which is a gift from you. Today is filled with opportunities to do good and love our neighbors. Forgive us when we are self-centered and think only of ourselves. Guide our city leaders and give them wisdom as they make decisions for all people. May we remember those individuals who don't have enough resources for daily living, those who are cold today, those who are persecuted, those living in fear. May we, who are able to stand in the gap for them, be that loving presence. Spirit of the living God direct our meeting and our leaders today. For in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kim. Great words. Next item, please.
Item four, communications from the audience.
This is the portion of the meeting where we invite those from the audience that want to speak, to approach the podium. Limit your remarks to five minutes. Announce your name and address or organization. If anybody would like to, feel free to step on up. All shy today, I see, so, okay. Very good. Next item, please.
Item five, consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Both moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Solner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Inzki.
Yes. Next item.
Item six A, consider update on structures determined to be unsafe and dangerous.
We're missing somebody.
Yeah, here he comes.
Here he is.
We're too fast for you, Trent. We're actually there. I run a tight ship here.
He started five minutes early, too.
To be fair.
That's probably true. I was making copies for you guys on something that's not on the agenda, so I was late. Okay, if we do have some in the audience. So, good morning, council.
Good morning.
Trent Maxwell, building official for the city. I've got the update on our demolition list that is current. We have three properties, and the three properties are 715 West First, 763 East Avenue F, and 1210 North Forest. We do have at least one property owner in the audience with us. And your packet is the status of each one of them. The 763 East F is ready to put sheetrock on. I believe they already have some on the ceiling. 1210 North Forest has also had their ceiling sheet rocked. They've got some of the wall sheet rock going on. And 715 West First has just a couple plumbing fixtures to set, and then help me move it in. So he's the furthest along. The other two are going to be real close to having their sheet rock complete, and then at that time, it's paint and trim and setting toilets and so forth. I'm recommending removal of the structures from the condemnation list. If you have any questions for me, or for at least one of our property owners, we'll stand for any questions.
Are these the last of those that we started with?
Yes.
Last year.
Ma'am, you don't have to, but if you did travel down here, are you interested in adding anything to? That's certainly fine. Any other questions to Trent or others?
Well, this is good to see, and to you specifically, and certainly to the other two property owners as well. Pleased to see that we come to this point, and job well done in that regards. Glad it was able to come to what I consider a successful conclusion.
Appreciate your time and effort.
Absolutely.
Are you ready for the motion?
By all means.
Okay. I will move to approve the removal of 763 East Avenue F, 715 West First, and 1210 North Forest from the condemnation list.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Solner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Inzki.
Yes.
Mayor.
Mayor, we...
If I could just give you an update on something to kind of go along the same line. Please.
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, the sugar mill.
Do tell.
Okay. So, apologize for being late, trying to get printers to work and so forth, but this is just an update. The sugar mill had a structural collapse, a failure. The owner was very responsive to this, got an engineer and architect over there immediately. The cost to make the repairs for the structure of that failure was up to at least $250,000, if not exceeding. We took this before, or planning did, before the Landmarks Commission on their last meeting. Unanimously, they voted to that it does not meet the secretary's standards on demolition. So, just prepping you, this will come to the council, one of the future meetings after they publish it, for a hearing. One thing I wanted to bring up today, though, is, you know, currently, that's how it sits. If something were to happen between now and maybe the next hearing, where we have to be a little bit more aggressive for the safety of the neighborhood, then we may be updating you on something different. But as it sits today, we're going to wait through the hearing process and go about it that way.
Do we typically, can that be cordoned off? Like, I remember growing up in that neighborhood and playing.
I'll visit with the owner if we can get some snow fence or some kind of fencing around it, sure.
Yeah, keep kids out of it.
Yep.
Think that would be helpful. Too bad.
Trent, whether for you, and I thought I saw Jim, maybe for Jim, and certainly may have some more discussion when we actually have the item come before us, it's a shame. And I guess my question, concern, I think the outcome here is pretty forgone. But what can we do, maybe from an inspection or having some foreknowledge of things deteriorating, to avoid another sugar mill situation down the road? I think of the Stevens Building. Now, that's going a different direction. We have some great things happening, and maybe it had been kept up better over the years, but that's, I don't know if this is older or not, but it's certainly of comparable age, and certainly be really a shame if something like that happened to the Stevens Building, for example. But not just these older commercial buildings, but certainly residential as well. So, can either one or both of you speak to, maybe from your respective duties?
Sure. I'll speak on just one part. With the complaint on the property maintenance program being relieved several months ago, after we get through our rental inspections and kind of address those items, we can be a little bit more proactive on places. I know the fire chief led a good march getting buildings addressed and inspected and categorizing those buildings. I know we had discussed years ago doing something like that within our department for structural integrity of the building, and if there's certain cracks or deficiencies within it, to try to gauge those and go back and re-inspect to see if things have moved. There's a couple buildings that we're currently doing that on. This was not one of them. Stevens Building wasn't one of them. So I think there's ways that we might be able to do initial inspections and see how things are changing, or if we notice that there's failures that haven't yet collapsed, with that property maintenance code, we could send them out violation to address the masonry issues. So, I don't know how much we'll be able to prevent, but definitely we can do something.
I think Trent's really covered it really well. The masonry problems are basically hundred-plus-year-old buildings, and if, you know, they're not taken care of with tuck pointing and things along their lifetime, they basically end up a stack of stones on top of one another, and the mortar becomes sand. And so then, it's just a matter of some sort of incident or activity that jostles it, and so there is concern there. One of the things that we hope to do this spring is to start a series of workshops and educational opportunities for people with historic properties. This particular one would be on windows and things. But Aaron and I attended a conference in Lawrence last fall, and there's a gentleman out of Oklahoma City that's just real energetic, really speaks the language of preservation economics. He's built a business in Oklahoma City from the ground up. I think he employs 17 or 18 people now, but they go around and fix wooden windows and things like that, things that are important to historic homes. So, we hope through a series of educational seminars, we can do that. But the big buildings, the masonry-issue buildings, and as you said, if the grant and the ability to help the Stevens Building wouldn't have happened, that building most likely over time would have had a similar collapse in the rear of the alley especially. So, but new owners, new guttering, new things that help, you know, because the brick and mortar, the mortar part is kind of what they call the sewer of a building, and it lets the right water in, it lets the right water out, and when it's not maintained properly, it messes everything up, and then that's what leads to collapses and things like that. So, and this building's limestone, so that's going back into, you know, probably the 1800s. I should, because I just saw the historic brief on a little bit ago, but I believe it's 1800s, late 1800s.
What is the owner using it for now, anything?
Well, they've had it on the market for quite a while, and they've had some interest, but then as people look at the building, and then the costs start to peak in, you know, it becomes an overwhelming task. I think through the efforts of the planning department a couple years ago, they had some money for a historic preservation architect, and he helped a group kind of look at that, and I think the improvements for what they wanted to do was well over a million dollars. So, it just becomes the economics of, you know, what you can do in a building like that, and so it's very, very tough, so.
So it wasn't actively being used even as a warehouse, or?
I don't think for quite a while. I know Rod Zuck did a little research on it, and I think he said the last real main use of it was in the 90s, late 80s, early 90s, something like that, so.
Now, what I want to draw attention to, whatever we could do proactively, you know, and maybe there are just some things, I would venture to guess that there was a sense of upkeep not occurring properly in this building, and I don't know if governmentally, we could have brought any pressure to bear, but it's just a shame. The Hope Building comes to mind. Now, it's certainly a different era, but, you know, that's a building that continues to stand vacant, and vacancy just leads to deterioration. The Landmark Hotel, of course, another one. And, well, I don't have an answer, but I'd sure like for us to continue to think about our historic buildings, our old buildings. I, for one, believe that they're worth preserving, that the history of this place and many places, but of our place here in Hutchinson is worth preserving, and to lose it is a loss that can't be recovered. We can certainly rebuild something on that site, but it'll never be the Sugar Mill, or it'll never be the Landmark Hotel. And certainly, there have been other buildings before my time and since my time of living here that we've lost. And it's a shame, it's a travesty, and I would hope that maybe if we see something, we can start putting it out there, and again, maybe if nothing else, bring some public pressure to bear on owners that are not keeping properties up, that if they aren't, they'll be falling down, literally.
And as much as I am equally as concerned about losing any buildings of historic value, I also am very concerned about the safety factor. Anything we in insurance call an attractive nuisance. If it's vacant, somebody wants to play in it, or go around it, or whatever, and had Jade been playing that day, not really, but, you know, what I'm saying, and I do, I see the landmark. I know it had water damage, too, at one point, when some sprinkler systems broke, or whatever, a few winters back. And what did that do, and has that been corrected? And, you know, just one person taking up occupancy in there without anybody's knowledge, and if they were on the wrong end of that, that could be pretty bad, so.
Well, it is a tough issue, and it's an ongoing issue, but the good news is there are folks that do invest and make those properties as new as they can in a hundred-year-old building, and when they can do that and use the tools like the historic tax credits, that's the overall win-win for the community and for the developers. So, we just need to be blessed with more and more of those projects. But truly, the Stevens Building and its help and grant will help preserve that building, and then hopefully, we'll have projects that will come along and do the same thing, and some of the other key buildings.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks, Trent.
All right, I believe we're onto the next item, if you would, please.
Item six B, consider market study for a hotel convention center.
Mayor, council, just a little bit of background. As you're aware, we've had a working task force that consisted of city staff, a couple council members, Councilman Dave Line and Deckent, they've been working with the chamber on this project, probably going back to last June. And the whole idea was, what can we do to address the convention center issue, more, I guess, hotel rooms that are attached? And so the first step that we took back then was to send out an RFP to see what kind of interest there might be from hotel development groups out there. And at that time, we received four, three letters of interest and one formal request or response to that. And as we looked through that, then the task force decided that we would recommend to this council, this body, at some point in time, that we enter into an exclusive negotiation contract with that particular developer. Last week, or February 8th, we, again, the task force met, and another component of that piece was the completion of a market study, just the feasibility of additional rooms and new convention space. And so, we met as a group on February 8th and made the determination that we would probably be best suited to begin first with a market study, go ahead and getting that completed before we entered into the agreement with Leeser on the exclusive development agreement. And really, all that agreement was, was going to indicate that the city chamber would work with that individual development company for a period of six months before we started going out talking to other people. And so, again, the consensus was to proceed with the market study, and the chamber board, basically, this was, we talked that the chamber would initiate the study, and then the proposal was that we would fund half of that. And so, we received three proposals from companies that do this work. The chamber board approved a contract last week with HREC for this work. Basically, what we're being asked today is, or the council's being asked today, is to fund half of that study. The cost of this study is $14,500 plus some travel expenses, and there's also some additional industry studies they would require, and those are fairly inexpensive. One of those, it's a trend report, is $500, and another one called a host report is $600. And those are fairly simple studies that talk more about occupancy numbers statewide in this and in our community as well. And so, basically, you know, that's a quick kind of rundown of where we're at, and the proposal again today is to proceed with the market analysis before we take any further steps on this project. And I know there's been conversation in the community about this project, and I wanted to point out that the study does indicate that they'll look at the existing site, and we've been very clear about that, that we haven't moved off the existing site as potential to add additional hotel rooms, tear down existing rooms, but they're also going to look at other locations as well. So, with that, I would just stand for any questions, but would recommend that the council authorize the city to fund half of the cost of that, and our share would come out of our transit guest tax that we've collected for several years now, the 3% that we've set aside for the hotel convention side, and then for improvements to our tourist attractions.
I'm really happy to see this, John. I think this is a good step, and something that needed to happen before we move forward with any company. I did have a question. In the agreement, it said that they'll have initial findings and recommendations prior to the end of January. Is that next January?
No. Yeah, and that's a good catch. Basically, the time schedule is, once we approve this, it would be two to three weeks, they would start their field study, get that information back, and then another two to three weeks. So, we're talking roughly about eight weeks from the time we sign this, that they would come back with their report, so. And I know Councilman Solner had that question, too, and I was trying to, I missed that somewhere where they said January.
So early on, my guess is they must have made this proposal initially in about November or December, probably.
Yeah, that could have been part of that conversation. Well, I think you're right, because I'd reached out to these, some of these companies back in December, but essentially, we're looking at probably eight weeks from the time they get the go, green light to go, to complete, so.
Well, there's been a lot of chatter and a lot of strong opinions about this project, and I think having some objective data and analysis is going to put us on the right track, so happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Did have a question about the out-of-pocket expenses that we'll be paying half of. Are we putting a cap on that, or where do you estimate those to be?
You know, I don't have an estimate. Leann has really been contacted, had contact with them, but I suspect it would be, you know, because most of their market research is going to be done in-house. I mean, they're going to just do that. They're not going to have to travel to do some of that, but there'll be, I'm sure, a couple trips here and there. I don't have that number, but I would suspect it, it won't be more than $14,000, which is what the study costs, but I can try to get, you know, a number for you on that to make sure that, you know, there's a reasonable number there.
Again, this is being funded by people outside of the community through transient guest tax, so it's not really impacting the general budget.
Right. But I would think those would be reasonable, you know, maybe a trip, hopefully, at least one or two trips to Hutchinson to talk to different groups and people.
And although they're based out of Memphis, you said they're representatives out of Kansas City, so that's not as long, that's a road trip.
Yeah, and I'm not sure who, actually, they'll probably have other, you know, several people involved in this, you know, some doing the behind-the-scenes research, some doing the boots-on-the-ground research, and so.
So would they then present to the entire council, or would they just present to the task force, and then the chamber board would be responsible for that decision?
We could have that either way. We'll get a written document, and, you know, it's probably one of those things that, you know, we would present from a staff level, however we request them to be here, that would be just an additional trip cost, but I think it might be helpful to have whoever did the report present it, and whether it be in a joint way, or we'll have to figure some logistics out on that, because that's an important conversation to have. And I don't want to try to represent what the feasibility study says, having not did it myself, so.
A little more on the, so will any travel be an upcharge?
Yes. I think it's covered, and you hit a lot of the highlights with your comments there, but some of the questions that have been asked of me, and I hope are asked of them within their study, is, you know, is there even a need? And what I mean by that is, do we want to be in the convention space? I'm not suggesting that we don't want to, but I don't know, and I don't know. I know that that area has changed over time. And then if we want to be in the same type of space that we're in, again, the size and scope, do we need a 200-plus facility, a 500-plus, a thousand facility? I know these are questions that they'll address. You had mentioned locations. Again, be open to all locations. I know some developers may or may not like one place better than another, but be willing to look at a downtown location, other alternate locations. I think the fairgrounds might have been mentioned at one time or another. And then, lastly, yeah, if all this happens, what becomes of the existing, if it is forsaken, that is, if we choose not to go with that as an option? So, those are a few of the questions that were asked of me. I hope that they'll be addressed in the study. I'm sure they will.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think the challenge will be, you know, and not being, doing the study, but probably can tell you that the convention space we have now, and another one like it somewhere else, probably doesn't work for one or the other. I mean, it's pretty obvious, and so I think that's part of what we'll hear, is that, you know, we can support X-square footage of convention space, but certainly not double, I would think, but, yeah.
At this point, I'm heavily biased towards supporting a project at the current location, and I don't know what the report will say, maybe it can sway me otherwise, but we're setting ourselves up for a huge headache at a major intersection if we build one somewhere else, in my opinion. Looking forward to seeing the results.
Looking forward to the data.
This will be, this will be helpful, I think, in the conversation, and as Jade said, answer some of those questions for us, yeah.
I think the other thing, just speaking from being one of the folks in the task force, all along, we had intended to have some study done. I think maybe it's a matter of the timing or whatever, but that was certainly a part of the anticipated process as we move along, or moved along.
I'm glad you said that, because the chatter on the street that I heard was that there was a rush to get something done without looking into it, and I assume that that was not accurate, but not having been on that particular task force, so I'm with Jade. I'm glad this is there. Steve, you're concurring that it was there all along, or would have been there all along.
Right.
So this is just the next logical step in this process.
Well, I think it's important that we all recognize we're really at a crossroads here as a community, as it relates to a convention center and the quality level of our current hotel rooms itself. And it's been a, I think it's been a bogey, Hutchinson, in terms of the unfortunate situation of the reputation that we don't have a first-class quality, five-star hotel, four-star hotel, with the appropriate type of convention facility. So, hopefully, this study will validate, I think, a lot of different varying opinions and give us some basis of moving forward with some informed decision, and I think that's what we're striving for. I think it's also important to realize that this is also going to be incumbent upon the ultimate developer. This is not a city of Hutchinson-owned property. That's not what we're advocating. We're simply a catalyst to bring the developer with some factual data that will help convince them to want to make that kind of an investment in Hutchinson, to bring us up to the standards and get back seriously in the convention marketing business. So, hopefully, this process will be beneficial to that end.
Any other comments, conversation with regards to this item?
I move we approve joint funding of the market study proposal from hospitality real estate counselors.
I'll second.
Smoothed and seconded. Please call the rule.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Piroste Carvalho?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six C, consider Hutchinson Police Department uniform change.
Chief?
Good morning. Jeff Hooper, Chief of Police. It's our model.
Our model.
Dan Stiles.
Looks sharp.
You've heard me talk since I've been here. And one of the things that's really important to me is that the Hutchinson Police Department, that we have a, that we're a professional organization and we have a professional appearance. But we're also looking at the functionality and safety of our police officers. I've been a traditionalist in law enforcement, kind of conservative that way. This has been, or some form of this has been the, the uniform for the Hutchinson Police Department for time immemorial. But it's not traditional law enforcement. Traditional law enforcement is law enforcement blue. The first official uniforms in the United States started in actually New York City with this color of, of blue. And most of your agencies have gone to this color. And it is a national push to go to the traditional law enforcement blue to better identify more uniformly our officers as police officers or authority figures within, within the community. So we've looked at that and we've looked at the, at the uniforms and wanted to get something that would be better suited for this. This is what we're going to kind of call our Class D uniform or our duty uniform for our officers. So kind of along those, those same lines, we're looking at the function and the safety of our police officers. So you see that now we have a outer vest carrier, which is also kind of the movement in law enforcement. And what that provides is a little bit better coverage for our officers, provides a little bit of better safety. Officers carry about thirty-plus pounds of weight around their waist on any given, any given day. And this will allow us to move a couple items off of their belt, up into that front area of that, of that vest to get some weight off of their, off their waist. And that's really for the longevity of our police officers. Over a twenty or thirty-year career, our officers can develop back problems because of the extra weight. And this allows that to make it a little bit safer for them. But it also allows better access to those tools in, in times of crisis where they need to access those tools. So it really makes it safer for our police officers. And to me, that, that safety is, is kind of paramount to our officers. So we're actually looking at this uniform change for our police officers, looking at a cost, an initial cost of anywhere between about twenty-nine thousand to about thirty-six thousand dollars for this uniform change. However, we have an advantage because the Wichita Police Department recently did a similar change where they, they went from their tan uniforms to this style of uniform. And they moved in a company locally that supplies these uniforms for the Wichita Police Department. They're, they're big enough that this company actually put a local office in, or, or office in Wichita, which would allow us to jump on their contract. And it does several things for us. One, we can get the uniforms at a reduced price. So we'd save somewhere between a hundred and fifty dollars every time we equip an officer. We also wouldn't have to pay shipping and handling costs and we wouldn't have to maintain an inventory of uniforms. We can ship an officer over to their office. They can get measured and fitted and return with uniforms. So ultimately, there'll be a cost saving. So down the road, we would recoup that initial investment of transitioning over to a different style of uniform. One of the things that is important to me though is this, this is my police department. This is the City of Hutchinson's Police Department. And I want them to support that or understand why we're making the change inside the agency. And so Mr. Deardoff and I thought this should come before you all to make that decision for us. Certainly stand for any questions?
You had brought up safety and, and I read a piece in here. But if you could maybe dive down a little deeper into that, what, what makes the exterior vest a safer option than the underneath the shirt version?
And there's a couple, there's a couple reasons for that. One, obviously you can get the desired coverage that we need with an outer carrier vest. You can actually get a little bit bigger vest to cover more of the surface area so that, you know, officers, even when they're wearing a vest, even if they take a round, it may not strike their vest. It can strike underneath their underarm or, or, you know, above the vest or underneath the vest. And so the vest offers no protection there. So with an outer carrier, we can actually get larger vests that, that cover a little bit more surface area. The other portion of that safety, I've already kind of mentioned, being able to move like their taser or tool up on their vest. So it's more easily accessible in times of need in the, in those high-stress circumstances. And then finally, on hot summer days or, or things like that, when an officer's in their car, they come back into the office, they can pop that vest open and just get some ventilation there. So you don't have the, you know, the heat and, and it offers them a little bit more safety in that regard as well. So.
And it would be a part of the required uniform. If they step out of the office on patrol, they're, they're in vest.
Yes. And they are now.
I thought they were.
Yeah, we're in patrol, but they're all under the shirt vest. Administrative staff don't typically, aren't required to wear vests, but the guys who are out on, on patrol are required to wear them. And so we would give the officers, it would be my intention to give the officers the option to wear either the concealable vest or the outer carrier vest. But I'm thinking you're, you know, most of the officers are going to opt for the, the outer carrier vest. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I've always felt like the current uniforms look too much like the correctional facility uniforms.
Yes, ma'am.
So I really appreciate the distinction. And I think, you know, on a national scale, you always see about, you know, supporting blue. So I like the move.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not in love with the more tactical look of the outer vest.
Right.
But understanding just what it does for the officers from a health perspective really helps me along with that. I hope that the public can be educated about that, too.
Yeah. And I too don't believe that our officers should have a tactical look. That's not what we're here for. We want to be approachable by the community and certainly don't want it to be like our E R T team, our emergency response team, that has the full garb helmet and the rifles and attack. That's not what our officers want. And certainly don't want young children to be afraid. And we want us to be approachable. And, and that's been a, this has actually been the biggest struggle for me because I don't want, I'm a traditionalist. But over fifty percent of the law enforcement agencies in the United States have already gone to this outer vest and their movement is, you're seeing more and more every day. And it's simply for the safety of the officer. So I started weighing that versus our officer safety. And when we looked at this specific vest, I got to give Tekken Stiles a lot of credit because he probably, I don't know how many vests he looked at before he found one that I actually kind of liked. This one's a lot more trim. It can, we can still pin the regular badge on the front with the name tag if we like. And so it's a lot less tactical. And some of them you'll see out there with the big pockets that they put all this stuff in. And it looks kind of sloppy and unprofessional. One of the other reasons to go to the darker uniform is if we stick with the lighter color uniform, you put a black vest over that, it stands out more and it even looks more tactical. This blends in a little bit more with the darker color uniform, so it's not as prominent. So.
Yeah.
What's the typical life of a, of a uniform for a patrol officer?
Well, figuring if they don't get in the fight and fall down and rip their pants, you know, some of those uniforms can last, you know, ten years.
Oh, really?
You know, we, we would find that. But, you know, officers are in scuffles a lot when we're replacing, we're replacing uniforms. Just so you know, our vests last five years and the ballistic panels then are no longer under warranty and they no longer can guarantee. And so we have to replace the vest every five years. But we do have a grant that's furnished to law enforcement agencies that, that pays back half of that cost. So right now is a prime time because half our officers this year are slated to get new vests and half our officers next year are slated to get new vests. And that's already budgeted in our funds. And so if we're going to make this outer vest move now is the time to do that.
You'd like to do this transition now?
Yes, sir, I would.
Okay.
How many sets of uniforms do each officer receive?
Yeah, typically we give our uniforms five pairs, our officers, five pairs of pants, five short-sleeve shirts, and usually a couple three long-sleeve shirts. They don't wear those as much. So.
You described this as Class D. Is there a dress uniform that is part of the issue?
There will be. And, and we're, we're, as you can see, with the Class D uniform for the duty uniform, we have a, there is a utility pocket kind of on the side. You can't see it very much. I am in, I am a, and that allows the officers to put gloves in their flashlight. I told him, I told him that's his only job today was to look good, you know.
And he does.
Well, he hit the gym this morning. He did shoulders and.
I said, Nancy, his eyes are up there. Please.
But one of the things that we are looking at is this is, this is strictly the duty uniform the guys will wear every day on the street. But for a dressier uniform, we'll have a, a Class C that will mostly be staff level where there'll be a stripe on the pants, no utility pocket. And then the outer vest is optional. It'd be something that I will probably wear on a daily basis so I can go out into the public, a little bit dressier. But if I need to throw the vest on when I'm going to a call or something like that, that's available to me. Then a, then a Class B uniform, which will have the stripe on the pants, long-sleeve shirt and tie that we'll use for formal events, funerals, or, you know, awards banquets or things like that. And then we'll have a Class A uniform that will be even a little bit dressier, where stripe on the pants, long-sleeve shirt, tie, will have years of service stripes on the sleeves for the officers. There'll be silver most likely for the officers and gold for the supervisors. And then for.
Stripes?
Years of service stripes.
Or silver or gold, you're saying?
Silver or gold, which will match the brass that we already have for, obviously officer has silver, you know, supervisors have gold. It'll match that. And then for command staff, ultimately, we're going to look at investing in formal jackets to wear for, for those events. So that will be a Class A uniform for, for dress events.
So obviously be an additional pair, at least one additional pair of pants striped for the, for the Class C, I think you called it. And then with the long-sleeve shirts that you talked about with tie and whatnot, be, be a regular long-sleeve shirt, just adding a tie to?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And, and so typically we're looking at, you know, we, for the officers on the street, we'll probably give them five pairs of pants plus a six with a stripe. They'll get a couple regular long-sleeve shirts and then they'll get their Class A long-sleeve shirts with the years of service stripes, you know. And for me, I'll probably be the opposite. I'll get a couple pairs of duty pants for, if I want to go out on the street. But generally, I'll probably have more pairs of the striped pants because that's my primary role and function. So.
And that's all incorporated in this?
Yes, sir. It is.
Figure that we're talking about. Okay.
Everything except for, the only thing we didn't calculate in there are the, the jackets, the suit jackets for the Class As for staff that we intend to look at later on down, down the line. So.
You talked about utilizing the current uniforms, the tan for volunteer and I think reserve.
The police service aide?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Police service aide.
Yeah, we have, obviously all the, all the officers have these uniforms. And we do have some still in inventory of used uniforms that are still serviceable. Didn't want those to go to waste. And we're looking at putting in those part-time police service aide positions to save some money for the city and, and allow them to do those functions that are traditional functions that a police department forms, performs, but you don't need a sworn law enforcement officer. For example, teleserve, taking reports or servicing people over the phone, doing traffic direction for parades and community events, responding to traffic accidents where they can direct traffic or they can help security of the scene or take information down from victims. We're even looking at having them respond to some of the more minor crimes for service, like a theft or where no evidence or arrest is going to be made. And, and they're part-time employees that can perform those functions. And that relieves some pressure off of our police officer. We're kind of, we're kind of doing it on a trial basis for this first year. Since we are short staffing, we're using our unused police officer funds to staff. And one advantage that allows us is that we can put eighteen-to-twenty-year-olds in that position because you have to be twenty-one to be a sworn officer. We got an overwhelming response over twenty applicants, I think there were for those positions. A lot of them are H C C students or from Sterling College that want a part-time job that are interested in law enforcement. So we also get to train them up. We get to test drive them, you know. And when they turn twenty-one, you know, hopefully they'll join our agency as, as police officers. So we're going to utilize these uniforms for those positions.
So we'll, we'll see these uniforms for quite some time.
Yes, sir. On non-police officer, non-sworn officers.
Officer, your boss is not in the room.
Do you like the blues?
I do like the blues.
Okay. Yeah. And, and your peer group, I read in your memo that you're hearing from others on the force that they also like the blues, that you're hearing that same communication. Yeah.
And we do have represented, the president of F O P is here. If you'd like to hear from him, I'm sure he would give you his opinion as well.
Well, I would entertain that as well once we're.
The shoes, are shoes issued as well or are those personally bought?
We issue boots. Yes, sir, we do.
And that's the, the issued boot?
Well, I don't know if his are. Yes, they are.
Okay.
Well, if that is.
All right.
Very good. If the gentleman from the F O P would entertain coming up and visiting with us for just a moment, put you on the spot.
Michael Collins, I'm the F O P president.
Wonderful. Thank you. And, and so you concur then again that you're seeing the trend is going towards the dress blues and, or not dress blues, but the blues rather. And the troops seem to endorse that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And they, they are on board with that. Okay. Well, it's a sharp look. I, I like the idea of the vest. I too with Jade was, don't want to have a military feel per se. I know that you said that's one of the things you were concerned about. And I don't get that from, from this. I know that, yeah, you can start loading that thing up pretty heavy, I'm sure as well. But, but it looks good. I also like the functionality of it. So yeah, when you're back at the shop and you can take it off for ventilation or, or just even to be able to move around and work better or whatever. Felt like there was another question I was going to ask. You covered about the various other classes of uniforms.
It's being funded out of available funds in the MRF.
There it is.
Yes, ma'am. It's, we have some MRF funds that were funded for a computer project and we.
Michael's like peace out.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And we, that project came in with some savings. And so I just want to reallocate those already budgeted funds for this project.
Great. Well, it looks like you've done all the background work.
I just comment, it does look more tactical than I was anticipating because of the, of the change to the outer vest.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I understand the change and it makes sense, but it, it looks more tactical than I anticipated.
But again, that's in the communication to the public.
Yes.
No pressure, Rebecca.
And, and quite frankly, so that's been my toughest struggle too. Because I told my staff originally, we're not having an outer vest carrier. So we're not doing it. But the more we started looking into it, one of the things that I won't do is sacrifice officer safety. And eventually in my mind, that's what won out was the safety of my officers.
Is that the longer vest that, that goes down a little further on the abdomen than to protect a little bit lower part of the body?
That's the idea. This vest is a little small for him. This was a trial sample that we got. And so ultimately, that exposed belly that he has there would, for the officers for an absolute fit when we get in, add measures.
Would be better covered.
Yes, sir.
But that one does have the better coverage under, you know, on the side.
Yeah, typically tie up underneath it.
Yeah, I think I would have an exposed belly regardless of the.
They special make those vests.
Got to do a couple more setups before I think about getting back in the force.
Do our officers wear hats typically or not?
They have hats available to them.
Hats available.
They have, we have ball caps, baseball hats for the summer. And then we have stocking caps. You'll see me wear it all the time.
Yeah.
Stocking caps that say H P D across the front of them. We do not currently have the old-style formal bus driver-type police hats. We don't furnish those. Those hats are very expensive and very rarely worn. And so unless you're going to have a funeral or something outside like that, we are looking at implementing something that I'm very proud of, an honor guard at the, at the police department. And that way they can represent us for law enforcement officer shot in the line of duty or events in the community that have significance. And so we've selected a members of those honor guard and we will, we'll purchase those hats for our honor guard for those formal, for those formal type events. But.
Very good. Well, again, just to add on to that, I, I like what I'm hearing about what's going on down at the department. I hear great things. I, I think the, the troops are on board. The morale is, is very high. And to use kind of a sports analogy that I use with John, this is, this is your team. And if you think that this is the uniform the team needs to be wearing, then I would suggest that I'm supportive of that. And we'll, we'll see if the rest of the group is on board as well. But like I said, I, I think if this gets everybody marching in the same direction and, and again, helps with morale and then things like that, then I would be very much in favor of it. So. Any other discussion?
I move we approve changing the Hutchinson Police Department uniforms.
And I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the rule.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Piroste Carvalho?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item seven, report of city officials.
I think we did right last time. Jade, do you want to?
I do have a few items. Thank you, Mayor. Was wondering where we're at in the process of hiring a human relations officer. I've had a few questions about that. I wasn't sure.
We have relatively low applications.
Yeah.
And we've got probably seven. And we'll be talking about that at the Human Relations Commission a little bit tomorrow night.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. But we won't be talking about specific names. And of the seven or eight, whatever there, you know, there's a hand, just a few that are probably qualified.
Yeah, it's, it's a struggle in this low unemployment environment, I think for us, even on the planning department.
Right. Yeah.
Position.
Same thing there. Yeah.
So we do. Um, so we do have a few positions open, well...
So, so the plan would be, and, and, and I just looked again yesterday, and, and we're probably ready to move forward on two or three of those to bring in, to start talking to, and, and, I mean, I think we gotta be realistic that this position could be from all walks of life. I mean, it doesn't, it's, you know, probably not gonna be a doctorate in diversity studies or, um, but, you know, we look back, Lila came out of education, and, you know, Merrill came out of, you know, a business and a public administration background and, and HR and kinda grew into that, so HR would be a good background, so, um, I think we gotta be open to that, because it is, uh, you know, somebody that's got some people skills, obviously, and, and you can learn laws, um, on the job, so.
Yeah, for sure, well, thank you.
And to add to that, if you don't mind, um, uh, definitely need to be open, and, and that was the great unknown when we put it together, um, would, you know, when we put this out and will we have all these great applicants arrive, or would we hear crickets or somewhere in between? Um, and, and it was, you know, we weren't sure, so I, I'd heard six, but now you say seven, uh, applications.
It might be eight, I'm just, I think I just looked yesterday.
Uh, and open to, uh, the, the right individual that has the potential right qualifications. We don't wanna settle by any means, because it is an important position that we're trying to, uh, fill, uh, um, but, uh, but it was, we just didn't know what we were gonna get once we put it out there.
Right.
I, I, I wish you luck, as you know.
Well, I'm optimistic that there's a couple in there that are gonna be, um...
What was your actual closing date?
We, we have them open, and, yeah.
You have them open, okay.
Yeah, we leave, we typically leave open until filled.
Okay.
I mean, we've been through the process before, where we've interviewed and an application comes in the next day, and wow, this is one we should talk to, so.
And I would encourage anybody in the audience, but then anybody who happens to be listening or, or watching abroad, if you know of a qualified candidate, uh, from any walk of life, uh, please encourage them to, to reach out, because it might be a good fit.
And I think we've got two or three decent candidates, that's, that's not bad at all.
No, yeah.
It's better than scrouching to get one.
Yeah.
That was my biggest fear, was literally the crickets. Oh, boy, here we go, back to the drawing board, so, we did have something, sorry, Jade.
Oh, the only other item I had is, uh, several weeks back, I had inquired about the possibility of reaching out to the owner of, it's not the Eaton building, it's the building adjacent or attached to the Eaton building. Um, has there been any efforts made or any success in contacting that person?
We, we've had contact with that individual through another economic development project that, as far as acquisition of property, and that hasn't resulted in much, um, but trying to remember specifically what, what your angle was.
Well, my angle was just, it's, and it's an eyesore, and I'm...
Yeah, looks...
It's horrible coming into that corridor, like all those people who drive from Wichita to work in Hutchinson, I think it's not an accurate representation of the positive qualities of our town, and I just wish we could do something about it.
The challenge is the, I mean, I, it's for sale, um, but for, um, amount that is just, yeah, not, not even reasonable to talk about.
Well, you are the Nurehand whisperer, so...
Yeah.
I have high hopes for you, John.
I need to find somebody with a million-dollar check.
There you go.
But, um, but, but we're continuing that conversation because the economic development project that we're talking about hasn't went away, and we're looking at options there, and, you know, there may, I mean, we've got, we've got issues with that property owner on Stormwater, uh, hasn't paid a Stormwater utility fee, and, um, you know, there's, we're gonna have to do something there, uh, at some point in time, and, uh...
I would just encourage us to do what all, whatever we can to...
Yeah.
To change that, you know, even if we have to go in with more of a honey-than-vinegar approach.
Yeah, well, I'll, um, I'll keep working on that to see if we can't get a little more open dialogue on, you know, I mean, the problem with the future of the building is the use of a building is zero. I mean, it's, it's, it, it's a, a, a tear down, and, and the property's valuable for future industrial prospects, but the building itself is really not usable for anybody.
Kind of, it's usefulness.
And that's the challenge, you know?
It is.
You wanna, you wanna buy it for this, and then you gotta spend this to tear it down.
Tear it down, then develop it.
It just is difficult, so.
Well, thanks for the update.
Yeah, no, we'll keep working on that, though.
That's all I had, thank you.
Steve?
Nothing.
Um, I was gonna chime in if I might, real quick. Um, we, um, uh, the various featured neighborhoods in the city of Hutchinson, uh, I've been able to attend, uh, a few of their meetings, and, and, uh, out of that outcome, the city has been able to collaborate with them to get some things done. Now, they may seem small or, or whatever, uh, on the surface level, but I think they meant something to those individuals. Uh, in southwest Bricktown, they were held up on finishing a mural under the Avenue A overpass, and through a great idea from the chief that I communicated to, uh, Mr. Deardorff, uh, that we were able to get the, um, the gentleman from the airport to go out and check on those, uh, birds to see if they were, uh, nesting there or whatever. He did what he had to do, he was able to clear the nests, I understand, so they can go forward with their project. Again, it seems small, but, uh, they should be able to go forward with that. Uh, in, um, uh, College Grove, we're having communications about their, um, sidewalk, crosswalk, uh, uh, pieces that they're interested in, we're, we're going forward, looking at that, uh, no promises there, but just conversation pieces. Uh, Farmington, uh, they were incre- or, um, they were worried about speed in, in certain areas. Again, chief, uh, offered to put some, uh, additional patrols or, I don't know if that's the right word, but have the, uh, the beat officers pay attention to that area, uh, they indicated in the mornings at eight o'clock and in the evenings, five o'clock, school and work and so on. Um, and then we were able to also put out some, uh, speed, um, uh, information, traffic counter devices, uh, and I think then, again, they, they were well received, and, and it just shows, uh, working hand-in-hand with those neighborhoods. Uh, and then, uh, that, that's all I had about the feature neighborhoods, but then I heard there might be some movement on the worst pothole in Hutchinson.
Which one is that? There are several.
It's not really a pothole, it's beyond that.
It's beyond that, now, it's a crater.
Yeah, you're talking about poor...
Well, the, the only movement is, and, and I actually did talk, and that, that's been an issue, and people under, it's Katy Drive, which is a private drive behind the McDonald's on East, uh, Eleventh.
Similar situation with private ownership.
And that is not a city street, um, even though it's called Katy Drive, but, um, did talk to the manager, um, last week, I think, and, and Mona, I think that was her name, but anyway, they've got a contractor under contract to complete that work, and, but it's not gonna happen like now, today, tomorrow, because obviously the weather, as soon as the weather clears, and so it's just like any street work we do, you're not gonna get that done until you've got a, a string of, of good weather, so.
Well, that's more communication than we've had in a while, so that, I thought it was...
We've at least been able to communicate, and...
Yeah.
There, there was an effort to get some of the other property owners involved in that, and I think that's kinda fell on deaf ears, and nobody wants to pay for it, um, until that road would get shut off, but, uh...
Right.
But it's an important drive to, uh, Port of Commons, so.
There it is, very fine. Uh, that's really all I had, thank you. Uh, John, anything to add?
Well, it appears that the weatherman is forecasting maybe three to six inches of snow. I wonder if maybe you could take a minute and just kinda review, uh, what our snow removal policy is in terms of what the public can expect, uh, as far as our snow removal?
I might let Brian go through the details, but, uh, we, we haven't had to practice it for at least two years.
No, I know, that's right, yeah, it's been a while, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, Brian Clinton, Director of Public Works, um, our policy is to treat all the arterial and collector streets, as well as the residential streets around the schools, and so that's our plan.
Okay.
Um, we'll have six snowplows out, um, treating, we've got, uh, our Salt Brian out right now doing some pretreatment on those major roads. Um, and really ideally, you only have to travel about four blocks of untreated roads before you get to a treated road, so that's how we've laid out our, our grid pattern of, of treatment, so. We've got, uh, crews set up on twelve-hour shifts, um, so eight to eight, and then another crew coming in from eight o'clock tonight through eight tomorrow morning is, is the plan right now.
Brian, what's the depth that we traditionally would move, push snow?
Yeah, once it gets to about two inches...
Two inches, about two?
We'll start, start pushing it off, but, uh, i- if it's forecasted like it is now, you'll probably see us out there a little bit sooner than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Safe to assume I'll need to take my shovel on the bike trail?
Well, the bike trails are, 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 will be, the snow will be removed off the bike trails as well.
Is that a fact?
They, they have your back.
You don't need your shovel, they're standing.
That's right, we, we do get calls if they're not.
Very good, well, it is important some.
Relatively soon, those, those are used all, you know, throughout the year.
Throughout, yeah.
We do that, do that before main...
And the Parks Department helps with, with that.
Very good.
Yeah.
And if people choose to make a call, who do they call?
Call six-nine-four-nineteen-hundred.
Okay.
Is the call to make.
Now, Brian, residential streets will not be plowed, am I correct?
That's correct.
Unless they're around a school.
Unless they're around a school.
And I think you also do around, do you do around nursing homes?
Nursing homes, no, not.
Okay, or I was thinking about, um, like, up on West Twenty-seventh where there's a high-rise, I thought you did around those areas, but Washington's, things like that.
Well, the schools are...
That's pretty close to, uh, Morgan, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so those would all get, yeah, most of the nursing homes would be on probably a collector or arterial that we get, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just don't block my alley, Brian.
Well, to your crew and to yourself, be safe, and, and thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thank you for that, thank you.
Nancy, anything to add?
Nothing, other than I don't want my alley blocked.
Other than that, exactly.
Do you want your, do you, do you want Adams cleared?
I want Adams cleared.
But you don't want your alley blocked?
I don't want my alley blocked, yeah.
Okay, well, that's a hard combination.
That is a hard conundrum.
Mr. Manager, anything to add?
A couple things, um, Park Master Plan, uh, meeting next Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, and that's in this back room here, um, that's, uh, just a review with a consultant on the, uh, Parks and Rec Master Plan that's...
What time is that, John?
Eight AM.
Eight o'clock.
Eight, okay, yeah.
Nancy's favorite.
Nancy likes the early meetings.
Yeah, um, and the other thing, um, just wanted to update you, we've had conversation about truck parking on East Twentieth, probably for at least fourteen years, maybe fifteen that I've been here, that's been a, and that is the street, Lorraine, uh, just off of Seventeenth north of Trinity that, uh, goes to the hospital. And, uh, we, we've talked about it as staff for several years, and, uh, finally come to the conclusion that probably the best approach, if we wanna eliminate truck parking there, is city council would approve an ordinance that would, uh, disallow commercial truck parking on that, uh, that roadway.
Do we not have to change this, I mean, part of it's because of the way it's zoned?
Right.
So do we not have to just change the zoning?
Actually, it's not zoned.
It's not zoned.
Zoning doesn't reach the street.
Oh, okay.
Zoning doesn't reach the street, huh?
And we've, we've actually said that before, but it's not true.
Okay, okay.
Right.
So, we would propose an ordinance that would simply eliminate commercial trucking of, of, uh, vehicles and trailers along that route.
So it'd be a route-specific ordinance, is what you're saying? Just that?
The reason we recommend that is, you could have some unforeseen consequences across the city if you do that, uh, because if you take a look at down by Siemens, for example,